The following program is the first Tuesday of the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to start out with three public hearings. I'd like to say, though, that the mayor is attending remotely from Florida. He feels it's appropriate to have the meeting chaired by somebody in person. That person is me, I'm Paul Mayo, council president. And I'd like to inform everybody that I will be voting on agenda items for the actual council meeting. We'll start out with a public hearing concerning an ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the zoning code, ordinance number zero-two-dash-two-zero-two-three. I think Jared has something to do with all three of these public hearings. Jared, would you like to give a brief description of what we're discussing tonight?
I would. And would you like me to just run right one to the next or take some gaps in between? You want me to go from, right from one to the next or should I take gaps in between? Gaps in between?
Okay, we've got to take attendance first. Okay, I'm sorry, but we're going to take attendance first.
Brian Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan? Henry Velicker? All right. Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dmitri Martin? Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Barb. Okay, Jared, just your brief description, please.
Perfect. So the first one is for ordinance zero-two-two-three. This is for the Resource Conservation and Parks District. So with this change, essentially taking a resource conservation district that just isn't being used properly, really isn't in the best interest of the zoning code to keep, making it into a parks, essentially a resource conservation and parks district, whereas before it was just a resource conservation. So this district will be mainly catered towards parks. There have been some permitted uses classified, some conditional uses classified, some general standards, and then the intent of the district was also clarified, so.
Okay. Thanks, Jared. At this time, I would be looking for testimony in favor of the subject. If you have any testimony in favor of the subject, please state your name and address and limit your testimony to two, three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor? Hearing none, I would be looking for testimony in opposition to the subject. Okay, hearing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed at six-oh-three. We'll move on to the second one. This is another zoning ordinance, I believe. Ordinance to amend chapter seventeen of the municipal zoning code accessory dwelling units. The people in attendance are the same as the first hearing. And Jared, would you describe briefly what we're looking at here?
Of course. Ordinance zero-three-two-three is in regards to our accessory dwelling units ordinance. So we had already changed a section of the ordinance in our lot dimensions and standard section to reflect that any detached building with an ADU, accessory dwelling unit can be thirty-five feet. There was a section in the ADU code specifically that also needed to be changed but wasn't changed at that time, so just bringing this forward to match what was already adopted in the code.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Okay, I'd be looking for testimony in favor of the subject. Any testimony in favor? All right, any testimony in opposition of the subject? Hearing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed at six-oh-four. And the third public hearing is also zoning-related, an ordinance amending chapter seventeen zoning code, ordinance number zero-four-dash-two-zero-two-three. Attendance is the same in this hearing as that was the previous two. And Jared, again, would you give a brief description?
Of course. Ordinance number oh-four-two-three. This is in regards to the creation of an airport district. So currently, our airport is zoned agricultural, which under the old zoning code did work. Under our new zoning code, with the revisions we've already adopted, doesn't work essentially. Creates a lot of headaches and hiccups in approval processes, as well as with any signage out at the airport for businesses, the airport itself, et cetera. So creating a separate airport district to allow a little more flexibility at the airport since it is its own unique entity, and it's kind of difficult to fit in with farm field. So this unique district would be catered towards the airport specifically.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Okay, at this time, I'd be looking for testimony in favor of the subject. Okay, hearing none, I'd be looking for testimony in opposition of the subject. Again, hearing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed at six-oh-five. We'll move directly into the regular council meeting. As I said, I'm chairing the meeting in person, and I will be voting on agenda items. We'll start the meeting out with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Barb, would you please read the opening meeting statement?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you, Barb. Would you take roll call, please?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker? Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dmitri Martin?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Barb. Would you also introduce yourself and go the regular rotation around your staff?
Barb Nowak, city clerk.
Aaron Jensen, city administrator.
Matt Clatt, airport manager.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Jared Requieu, community and economic development.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Paul Benjwell, police captain.
And I think Josh is in the control room. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a collection of agenda items that we're going to approve with one vote. If anybody has an item on the consent agenda that they like removed and put on the regular agenda, now's the time to request that. If not, I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move to accept.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Corey or Paul? Paul. Paul Hagan to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no. Motion carries. Next is approval of the regular agenda. I think we have one item, Barb, that we're removing.
Yes, under number seven, announcements and correspondence, Zachary Thorne will not be here tonight, so we're going to pull his in hopes that he comes on the June meeting, one of the meetings in June.
Right, right. Okay. And we have no additions to the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I need a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda. Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Peterson to approve tonight's regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Next, we have announcements, correspondence. We have annual review of the Code of Ethics. I'm assuming everybody's reviewed the Code of Ethics and memorized it and is in agreement with us. All right, and we'll just read it into the record that we have done that and as we have in past years, and move on to the next item. Okay, which is, presentation of certificate of appreciation to Brett Rodan for fifteen years of service to the city. Paul? The mayor hasn't signed it yet, so we'll let him sign it, but just so Brett knows he has it coming. All right, all right. All right, thanks, Paul. Next is public input. If anybody has any public input, anybody in the audience or council or staff has any public input. Now is the time, state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Preferably less.
Well, thank you. My name is Sue Abrahamson. I'm a city employee, been in the children's department of the library for twenty-eight years. I've been always proud to be an employee of the city of Wapaka, but never before have I felt that our community is on the brink of so many exciting yet challenging opportunities. Laura Colbert, who is not here tonight, and I have had the pleasure of representing the city along with grant writer Greg Gromon and council representative Colin Dykstra on the Dream Up Grant Initiative that awarded the city seventy-five thousand dollars last year to explore an impactful response to the childcare concerns of our citizens and businesses. This really affects me as a children's librarian. I see families all the time. And I'm here to say that the first years of a child's life are critical in how the child will learn and grow into a working adult. Every child needs and deserves the opportunity for a strong start on the path to success. Investing in those first five years of a child's life pays dividends later on in terms of a quality workforce and engaged public. In asking school administrators how we as librarians can help them do their job, their repeated answer is always the same, to get our kiddos ready to start school. So in attending these meetings with Colin and Greg and Laura, I heard something at my very first committee meeting that caused me to see things a little differently that I'd like to share with you. At that time, a local human resource professional from a major industry in Wapaka discussed needing to change the dialogue in our community that says, what's the matter with people? Nobody wants to work. They want to change that to a more realistic comment of, I see people wanting to work but can't afford to work because they don't have reliable and affordable childcare. So here's what we know for sure, to be true, that Wapaka has two licensed group childcare centers, and one of them is for sale. There is no certified family childcare in Wapaka. Sunny day right now has a waiting list of a hundred kids. The average monthly cost for childcare in Wapaka is eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars. That was more than a car payment I've ever had to make. Eighty-three percent of those working in Wisconsin's childcare workforce have some education beyond high school, but that average wage is ten dollars and sixty-six cents an hour, and more than half of those workers rely on some sort of public assistance. Childcare centers, like everybody, are experiencing a worker shortage. More than seventy percent of Wisconsin households with kids under six, all available parents are in the workforce. So from the business side, what does this do to businesses? Eighty-six percent of working parents say that childcare issues hurt their work time both in attendance and in attention while at work. And so we are working hard with the Childcare Resource and Referral Group in trying to find more options for childcare in Wapaka, and they're doing a really good job trying to find people to seek a career in childcare and make more available spots for those families who are on the waiting lists. And this is not only a local issue. Childcare deserts are all over our state and nation. State and federal legislators like Joan Ballwig and Tammy Baldwin and others have been listening and acting on behalf of industry and local communities like Wapaka who are tackling the problem. So tonight, I'm here with an ask. My ask is, excuse me, my ask is for you tonight to listen to the needs of your constituents, especially young families. Learn more about the issues of our local businesses who need workers, who need childcare. Spread the word about the work that's being done. Empathize with all those in the childcare industry who are struggling. Pay attention to those state and national, federal legislations being brought forward and support the efforts that are going to help us here in Wapaka. On Monday, May eighth, there's an event that Laura and I are cosponsoring with the childcare resource and referral folks and some area businesses at the middle school, and you all have a flyer and sticker with that information. At that event, you're going to hear a panel of business leaders from our community, families needing childcare, childcare professionals, and our state legislators have been invited to attend as well. There will be media presence there, and so if you could be there to show support that the city is behind our work, that would be great. And finally, Greg's going to be bringing forward in the coming weeks to your meetings, a resolution that identifies the city's commitment to addressing this childcare situation and its direct impact on our local economic development. So we are noticing an increasing number of young families making their way to Wapaka. Some grew up here, pointing out those people, and are returning home, and others are recognizing all the hard work we've done in making positive changes in Wapaka's culture. But everybody that comes is looking for opportunities for their families. For the future of Wapaka, there has to be a solution where families aren't mortgaging everything for the right to have kids and help them thrive. I have more flyers if you can help me distribute them. The stickers are to engage dialogue in the community about the needs, and hopefully you'll hear some stories. If you have any questions, you can see me at the library. I know I probably went over three minutes. I talked as fast as I possibly could.
That's just fine, Sue.
But thanks for the time for sharing. This has been an eye-opening experience, and I want to thank Aaron for the opportunity to let Laura and I participate with Colin. Do you have anything you need to add?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Thanks for your efforts.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, anybody else have any public input? All right. Move on. We have no unfinished business. Move on to new business. Item A is approval of the use of East Fulton Street for Saturday Farmer's Market. And Lindsay is not here today, or at least right now, and Aaron has volunteered to give us an update on that.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. So council members, I just got an email. I know Lindsay was planning to attend tonight. She had a kind of an emergency situation come up, got an email at about six o'clock. So I'm trying to pinch-hit here a little bit. I know she wanted to share a bunch of stats with you, infographics on how the farmer's market has grown, how they continue to provide healthy and local food options to more and more people every year, and also the kind of the entertainment and the events that they've helped create a vibrancy in the downtown area. I'm sure she will come back and she'll be able to speak to all that. But I wanted, since we have it on the agenda, I really wanted to make sure we tried to get the really important things done, and that is, they were also requesting to use, again, East Fulton Street for the farmer's market this year. Nothing is going to be changed from previous years. It will be on Saturdays from nine AM until one PM. Typically, they start setting up around eight AM, get out of there at about one-thirty at the latest. So I think that is what we hope to accomplish. I know they do start mid-May, so it'd be good to get it done now if everyone feels comfortable with that. And if anyone has questions on anything, I'll answer what I can, and if I can't answer it, I'll try to get that for you and answer it at the next meeting. But I guess we would be asking for approval of the Wapaka Farmer's Market to use that space again, as they have in the past, East Fulton Street for the two thousand twenty-three Farm Market.
So moved. So moved.
Second. Moved by Dmitri, second by Corey. Corey, to approve the use of East Fulton Street for Saturday Farmer's Market. Any discussion?
Do they have an end date for the last one? Do we have dates?
They typically go, it actually does vary, typically go through sometime in October, and it gets to be a lot more sparse at that time. I don't have an exact date, sometime in October.
Good enough.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, we already have a motion. Barb will take a roll call vote.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker? Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Next two items are mayor's appointments to boards and committees. The first one is a mayor's appointment of Alderman Dave Peterson to the Sewer and Water Utility Board. At this time, I need a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointment of Dave to this board.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Hagan to approve the mayor's appointment of Alderman Dave Peterson to the Sewer and Water Utility Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. The next appointment is a mayor's appointment of Ben Conan to the Emergency Management Committee, and I'd need a motion and a second to approve this appointment.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Martin to approve the mayor's appointment of Ben Conan to the Emergency Management Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say no. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have proposed changes to city and ordinance number one-point-zero-three and one-point-zero-four. One-point-zero-three is appointed official, zero-four is in boards and commissions. This is the first reading, and Aaron, you're handling this, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. You'll notice, as Paul said, this is, again, the first reading. It's not under unfinished business, it's under new business. And the reason is because we did end up adding the inland waters committee, which we talked about doing. I'm trying to scroll all the way through this and get there. Okay. As we talked during the first reading last time, we were considering it. I think we kind of looked at all of you around the room and tried to get an idea of if you'd be in favor. We saw a lot of head nodding, to be honest, and seemed like it was going to be favorable to bring forward the idea of having this inland waters committee. And just to remind everyone why, we have the inland lakes district, which is an actual taxing district. It does tax, I think, a penny, I believe, the mill rate. It raises about ten thousand dollars, and it is the border of the city. We do have a, and friends of Mirin Shadow Lake do a fantastic job, they're very active in developing lake management plans for those two lakes. But often, we may forget about some of the rivers and mill ponds and such that also run through our city limits, which is actually what the inland lakes district is also in charge of. So this inland lake, this inland waters committee would have the duty of overseeing the initiatives as well as the financial tools for that district. You can see there the number of members. We have set at seven. Three shall be members of city council. I know I've heard from one individual that is interested, and we would plan to have that person be on there. If anyone else is interested in being on this committee specifically, please don't hesitate to reach out to myself or Mayor Smith. We felt like the park and rec director would be the most appropriate staff member to be the representative. We have parks on all of our bodies of water surrounding it at some point, and Laura agreed to that, so I want to thank her for that. Two shall be citizen-at-large appointed by the mayor, and the thought was there is that one maybe could have that interest of the Mirin Shadow Lake area, and others may have an interest of one of the rivers or mill ponds. And then one will be a high school-aged youth on board representative, if we can find. Corey is actually the high school rep and advisor to that program, as he works at the high school, so Corey, if we can find somebody that's interested in that, too. Again, these would, we would intend to have these during the day, seven-thirty to four PM, if we can, and that's kind of where we're, that's kind of what we're. Yeah, sorry. The start would be sometime between then and the end would be sometime between then. I should clarify. Yes, that is not, the intent is not to have that long of a meeting. So if there are any questions on this, and then obviously, we went through all of the other nuances during the last meeting, but that's the addition. Any questions on the proposed inland waters committee and the revision to this ordinance? Or anything else about the ordinance, I should say? If not, we can't, we won't act on this tonight, and if you have questions between now and the next meeting, you'll have the opportunity to ask those questions, sit down with me at any time. And then if there are no suggested changes, these could be officially approved at the second reading on May sixteenth. If that happens, my intent would be to kind of start ramping these meetings up, having official meetings in probably some of them in June, some of them July, for these new committees.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Next, we have ordinance number zero-two-dash-two-zero-two-three, amendment to chapter seventeen-point-one-five-three, RC Resource Conservation District. This is the first reading. We had a public hearing on this tonight, but Jared, would you like to briefly describe what it's about? Thanks.
So this one starts on page seventy-six of your packets. Ordinance zero-two-two-three is regarding the Resource Conservation and Parks District. This was a strictly resource conservation district that just wasn't being used properly. Wasn't, throughout the city, it was not in correct locations, you know, both where, if we're going to do it where it should be, and if where it shouldn't be, where, you know, I guess, could be argued that there would be a reason for that resource conservation. Oh, boy. So the intent would be to make this resource conservation into a resource conservation in parks that would encompass city parks. Really, you know, the resources that it was meant to protect, like floodplains and wetlands, are already being managed by the DNR. Really, the intent of the zoning code and zoning map isn't to distinguish those areas as it just really complicates the zoning code itself, and as we all, I'm sure, can agree, zoning is complicated enough. So this would be just looking to clean up the zoning code, zoning map, creating parks, creating a specific parks district, better, clarifying the intent, the different uses that would be allowed, different conditional uses and standards, so just kind of clarifying, making it easier for us to enhance our parks, you know, with the master plans that we bring forward, like for Lakeman Field, for Swan Park, you know, the other elements that we'd like to add that we bring forward as well in our master plans. So that's a little bit about it, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Any questions for Jared? All right, this is the first reading. We'll be voting on this our next meeting on the sixteenth. Item F is ordinance number zero-three-dash-two-zero-two-three, amendment to chapter seventeen-point-three-one-three, parent to parent A, accessory dwelling units. First reading, and Jared, this is you again.
Thank you very much.
Describe it, please.
I'll do better this time. Ordinance zero-three-two-three, this is really just a cleanup. We had already, or the council had already approved a change in our lot standards that say, that says, any detached building containing an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, can be thirty-five feet, so we're just changing another section of the code to match that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Jared on this? All right, we'll move on to item G, ordinance number zero-four-dash-two-zero-two-three, amendment to chapter seventeen-point-one-zero-one, creation of chapter, and creation of chapter seventeen-point-one-six-zero, APD Airport District, and repeal of chapter seventeen-point-three-zero-four. Airports, it's a first reading, and it's you again, Jared, please.
Thank you very much. This one starts on page eighty-one of your packets. Ordinance number oh-four-two-three, as the creation of an airport district. So essentially, our airport is a very unique asset for the community. Right now, it is zoned agricultural, which just, under our current zoning, really doesn't fit, doesn't allow for signage. A lot of the uses that are in agricultural really don't apply for the airport, so it makes sense just to create a special airport district that allows a little more flexibility for what we're doing there, for development. You know, we're looking to go through a master plan of what we can do there, so this ordinance is kind of the start of making it easier to move forward and progress the airports towards success. I'm going to make a special note on this one. Our airport manager is here today, so if you have any questions, and I mean any, he loves questions.
Okay, any questions for Jared, our airport manager? Come on. Okay, nothing. Again, this is the first reading. We will be voting on this on our May sixteenth meeting.
Matt, we got you out of a hat for nothing. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for attending.
I can come up with a question if you want.
Oh, had none. We have no issues or project. We have no issues, issues or project discussion, and next to communications and recommendations of the mayor. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thanks Paul. I really don't have anything tonight, and I don't want to stop you guys from getting out in a short period of time tonight. So thanks spring, hope to see you soon.
Thank you Mayor. With that, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Hagan, second by Martin, that we adjourn until the next regular council meeting on Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three. Subject to call. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose no, motion carries, meeting is adjourned at six-thirty. Thank you.